I call a meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak.
Here.
Peg Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattonback.
Here.
Alita Kamine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolfe.
Here.
Scott Larmour.
Here.
Kevin McDonough.
Here.
Lieutenant Bloom.
Here.
Rick Kay.
Here.
And if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is our minutes from our last meeting. Those minutes were circulated in advance. Are there any comments on the minutes?
No.
Seeing no comments, we consider the minutes approved. Next on the agenda is our finance report for March 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. The March financials were included in your council packet, and I'll talk briefly about the March financials. We had a great first quarter for 2019. So our revenue, our earnings tax collections for the month of March were over $200,000. We were up almost 20% from March of 2019. The earnings tax was estimated $3 million. So far this year, we've taken in a little over $619,000 in earnings tax. Well, we did receive about $4,600 in local government fund. So our total revenue for the month of March is $344,000. That brings us to a total of year-to-date collected in the amount of $1,351,000. Our estimate for the entire general fund is $5.6 million. So we're at a 24% collection as of the end of March. On the expense side, expenses were about $547,000. We've spent so far $1.3 million of our $5.6 million budget. So we've spent 23% of the budget as of the end of March. And we end the month of March with a $4.7 million unencumbered general fund balance. Obviously, things have changed since March was closed out, and Councilmember and Finance Chair Ed Hattonback will report on the Finance Committee meeting that was held this past month. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Hey, are there any questions for the manager? Hey, and just by the way, on my wife's computer, I can't see participants. So if there are questions, please just enter, just say them.
Okay.
We'll now move on to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. As Scott was saying at the April 30th meeting, he provided the committee a new budget overlook for the remainder of 2020, considering the impact of the pandemic on the village. Expectations are that the revenues from earnings taxes may be reduced by as much as $500,000. So our budget of $3 million probably has to be reduced to about $2,500,000. Additionally, real estate tax revenues may be lower by about $50,000. Now, that is really more of a timing difference because the real estate taxes will be collected eventually because they will stay on the books at the county. One way of baking up lost revenues is to consider selling excess salt, which will be, that particular item is being considered, it will be brought up in the Streets Committee meeting, which will generate some additional revenue. Anticipated loss of revenue, which we expect right now, is about $550,000. Mr. Larmour and the staff also addressed cutting expenses in order to offset the loss of revenue. Plan is not to cut personnel costs. However, various expenditures for supplies and capital expenditures will be deferred till 2021, and the range of expenditure cutbacks will be about $400,000 to $50,000. So basically, we're looking at shrinking the potential deficit to $100,000 for the year. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for Councilman Hattonback? Okay, we'll now move on to the Police and Fire Committee.
Thank you. The committee met on April 30th to discuss the resolution that you had in your packet, which proclaims this week to be Police National Law Enforcement Memorial Week and the May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. You may recall, this is an annual occurrence where we pass this resolution, participating in a national observance that has been going on since 1962. Normally, there would be events downtown at the Police Memorial, a parade and speeches and things. Obviously, because of that, of the pandemic, we're not having those this year. And so the public residents in Amberly particularly are invited to participate by lighting up their houses with blue light bulbs on the porch or with Christmas lights around the house or the door. You could also place blue ribbons on your mailbox or columns or posts. In particular, people are encouraged to wear blue on May 15th. And then to, if you do any of these things, post on social media with the hashtag #LightOhioBlue as visual aid, our village manager's background. This is a particularly poignant issue in Amberly Village for our staff. You may know that the chief is very active in the support organization for our region, the S.H.I.E.L.D., that provides personal and financial support to families of fallen officers. And in that work, he is greatly supported by the whole department. So this national observance is very personal and poignant for our officers. So therefore, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2020-14, proclaiming the week of May 11 to 17, 2020, as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-14, proclaiming the week of May 11 to 17, National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15, 2020, as Peace Officer Memorial Day. Are there any questions? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-14. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kamine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
And Peg, did you have anything else?
No, I was waiting for you to say it passes unanimously. No, that concludes my report.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Thank you. Before you have two resolutions, I'll be going through one. One is a follow-up of what Mr. Hattonback described regarding the salt purchase, well, the salt sale, and that's what I'll be going through now. First of all, the Streets Committee met on April 30th, and as with many of our committee meetings, they're now by Zoom instead of in-person. Last year, September 2019, council approved the purchase of 900 tons of road salt with the adoption of Resolution 2019-25, authorizing a contract with Cargill at a price of $89.66 per ton. The amount of salt that we purchased anticipated an average snowfall, average use of salt, which would be less than, you know, what we purchased in past years, in part because previous years, we had considerable amount of salt left in our salt barn. Now, the purchase and delivery of rock salt needed to occur before July of this year. And as you know, the winter this past year has been particularly mild, with very little salt used. Amberly Village purchases, mentioned before, between 800 and 1,000 tons of rock salt on an annual basis to provide snow and ice control for an average of 12 to 14 snow events per year. The village has utilized Hamilton County's procurement program to obtain bulk rock salt at a less expensive rate, and also the city of Cincinnati's purchasing contract. As the village began analyzing the financial impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and considering planned expenses to cut, the village began exploring places to store our excess rock salt, which had not been purchased or delivered yet. The village's salt facility holds about 1,200 tons, and our salt barn was about three-quarters full. In talking with the city of Mason about capacity to store our excess salt, they indicated they were beginning to purchase salt for next season. Their city managers suggested that instead of storing our salt in their facility, they would buy our salt with a few stipulations. First, the expense of delivery would be borne by the village, and if the village needed salt for the next season, 2020-21, the village would buy back the salt from the city of Mason at the same price of $89.66 per ton. So the city of Mason has agreed to purchase up to 500 tons of Amberly salt, and this will generate about $45,000 in revenue savings for this year to the village and avoid having to store and ship the salt elsewhere. It also enables the village to have a supply of salt next year if the village would need any additional supply. Under the arrangement, the village will spend about $700 for the shipping cost to Mason. Likewise, the village will store the remaining 300 to 400 tons at our facility, and if necessary, find a place to secure it. So the offer to sell our salt to the city of Mason was presented to the Streets Committee, and we voted to recommend to council that they approve Resolution 2020-15, authorizing the village manager to sell excess rock salt to the city of Mason. There is a motion?
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-15, authorizing the village manager to sell the salt to the city of Mason. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-15. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kamine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
Okay, next item is Resolution 2020-16, authorizing the recognition of National Public Works Week in Amberly Village. The American Public Works Association sets aside a week in May each year to celebrate those services provided by maintenance departments throughout the country. The theme for this year's event is "The Rhythm of Public Works." Our Public Works Department is referred to as the Amberly Village Maintenance Department and is on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for both Maintenance Department and Fire Department-related duties. The department is responsible for a variety of tasks critical to the safety and quality of life enjoyed by Amberly Village residents. Some of the services provided by the Maintenance Department include street and right-of-way repairs and maintenance, storm sewer pipe and catch basin restoration repairs, snow and ice removal, brush clipping, leaf pickup, tree removal, litter control, maintaining guardrails, traffic signs, buildings and village-owned properties, and vehicle maintenance, including fire department apparatus. In addition, our employees respond to flooded streets, storm damage such as trees and tree limbs that have been blown down into the right-of-way, malfunctioning traffic signals and damaged street signs. They also remove trash and other debris from the village's streets to ensure a clean and safe community for residents and businesses. All seven employees are also fully certified firefighters for the village. This makes the entire Maintenance Department trained as firefighters. While our Amberly Village is one of two uniquely combined police-fire departments in the state of Ohio, our Maintenance Department's dual roles of maintenance and fire is also the only entity in which we're aware of. And as you know, this past year, and I think we can all recognize, the role that Maintenance Department and also the Police Department played in really securing the safety of our communities. We've experienced tremendous storms over the last year, and certainly just a few weeks ago, we had a near tornado that went through Amberly, downed a lot of trees and power lines, and Maintenance Crew was out there in the middle of the night, you know, trying to make us all safe. So they really do a remarkable, they really perform a remarkable service to the residents and businesses in the village. So before you is Resolution 2020-16, proclaiming May 17 to the 23rd as the 2020 National Public Works Week. A motion?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-16, proclaiming May 17 to 23rd as National Public Works Week. Are there any questions? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-16. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kamine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yeah.
And that concludes the...
Oh, wait, was that it? I'm sorry. That concludes the Streets Committee meeting. That concludes Streets, I'm sorry. Streets Committee report.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Public Buildings and Parks Committee.
Thank you. You usually say, be it noted, that the resolution passes unanimously. That's like the clue to say, anyway. We're all flustered.
But now, but now, since we're doing the roll call, I haven't been doing it.
Ah, okay, got it. All right, well, I'll be queued up. Okay, the Public Buildings and Parks Committee met on May 7th via Zoom. In the storm that Mr. Warren just referenced, you may have noticed that some trees along the tennis courts on the municipal grounds fell on the fence. There were two or three trees that fell and knocked down a section of the fence. Staff filed an insurance claim, and a jester came pretty promptly, actually, and assessed the damage and awarded a total of about $37,000. The breakdown of it actually allocated more funds to the courts themselves, even though the more obvious damage to us was to the fence. So at our meeting, Scott showed us some photos of the courts there. We discussed that kind of an obvious solution would be to replace the fence, which has been a problem for quite a few years. It's rusting, it's not in good, it is in good shape, it just looks terrible. So that was an option, but the courts themselves need some work, and so it didn't seem sensible to use the bulk of the money to replace the fence and then have courts that are not in great shape. So in terms of the fence, to start with that information, the total fence replacement ranged in cost from $25,000 to $32,000. To simply repair the section would cost about $2,000. Staff also consulted with Ubers and Sons, who previously in 2016 repaired and recoded the courts for a cost of $17,000. They provided an estimate that it would be $16,000 to $18,000 now to repeat that same work, or we could fully resurface and have them dug out and new asphalt and all that for a cost of $65,000. So we had a lot of discussion in the committee because we wanted to maximize what we get from the insurance to make an improvement. The issue of the trees themselves also came up for discussion. Scott noted that they seem to be, some others of them seem to be coming to the end of their life. A total of three trees fell in the month of April. Two of them were in that one storm, and one was earlier. And so we asked Scott if cutting down some of the trees might not be a good use of some of the insurance money. So that is in fact permitted. The insurance company does, whatever we do to mitigate the situation is up to us. So that is still under discussion. So the committee's recommendation was to do the option one with Ubers, the lower-cost repeat for $16,000 to $18,000, repair the section of fence for $2,000, and look into tree work in order to get the money. We will initially get an insurance payment of $28,000 with the additional $8,000 coming after we document that we had the work done. The trees, the loss of trees is always kind of a thing, but in this case, it could be, it's, you know, if they're coming to the end of their life, and they are not the greatest thing next to the tennis courts. They do provide some shade, which is welcome, but the needle dropping is a constant problem. They have to be swept, and the degree of shade that they provide prevents the courts from drying, and so there can be slippery parts. What the Ubers' work will do is cover the cracks with tape and then resurface. We have some persistent cracks. Court two, the second one from Ridge Road, is particularly problematic and in some ways unplayable for some people. So tonight, we have, that's kind of the full picture of the situation. Tonight, we have Resolution Number 2020-18, authorizing the village manager to execute any documents for the purpose of making repairs to the tennis courts at the municipal building. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-18, authorizing the village manager to execute documents for the purpose of making repairs to the tennis court. Are there any questions or comments?
I just want to add one thing to what Councilperson Conway shared, and that is when we remove these, when and if we remove these trees, these pine trees, the goal is to replace them with some other, you know, trees, shrubbery, that will provide shade, but not shed on the tennis courts.
Good point. Thank you, Ray.
The other option is that we would put some type of shade material on the fence, which is also, you know, could be another option.
Good point. That was discussed.
Other questions or comments?
I'd just like to add that I really appreciate the thoroughness of what was provided to us at the committee meeting. I mean, the next, all the questions we had were readily answered, so we were able to expeditiously deal with the matter, including screen sharing of photos of the courts, which was very helpful.
With regard to the trees, if you want to consult with the ESC, they've done a lot of work on trees and native trees for this area, and you can choose a male or female tree, and you want to make sure you get a tree that doesn't produce and drop seed pods as well, because not every maple tree will have seed pods, and not every American sweet gum will have the seed pods. It depends on male or female tree.
Noted. Good point.
Those are good shade trees.
Okay, if that ends the comments, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-18. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattonback.
Yes.
Alita Kamine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Okay, we'll now move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items under the manager's report. The first is an ordinance that is being proposed, Ordinance 2020-10. This would add Chapter 160 to our codified ordinances, establishing some regulations for small cell facilities. So let me just give you a little history on from where this came. The state of Ohio passed House Bill 478 last year, regulating small cell facilities in Ohio. This was a litigated item, so it went back and forth a couple times. The House had a version, the Senate had a, municipalities actually sued over this issue, and the result was that the state ended up giving some regulation authority to municipalities, but kept it within reason from their perspective as it relates to small cell. So small cells also referred to as 5G. It is, it's visible, you will see small cell facilities in various communities. We happen to not have any small cell facilities here that I am aware of. But as we embarked on this discussion, one of the vendors approached us about putting in small cell in the village, and it was obvious that we did not have any regulations. So staff began working on doing some research on the topic and determined what we could do in order to establish some regulations so the telecommunication companies could abide by that as it relates to small cell. So what we embarked on was trying to identify the maximum height that a cell, a small cell tower could be, or a pole. It's actually a pole, not so much a tower. Also recommending the co-location on a pole as opposed to having separate poles for all of this, setting a spacing requirement, how close they could be together, and in addition to how close they could be to a house. And then stipulating, finally, that we do not want wood poles installed for small cell, but instead, we want poles that are what I would describe as stealth-looking, or at least pleasing somewhat to the eye if we're going to have poles in the village. So that ended, that started our research. We went to other communities to find out what they were doing. Some communities have done some things. Mason, Loveland have come up with regulations, Blue Ash as well. Other communities like North College Hill, Middletown, Fairfield, Fairfax, well, a lot of those communities have not, nor has Madeira. And so it was obvious that maybe the communities have not been prompted like what we were prompted with in regards to a request to have some poles installed in our village. So that led us to the next stage, which was to look at a community that had prepared regulations on small cell. And so we took that information and tried to replicate it as much as possible for the city of Mason, and we did that in consultation with Kevin McDonough on this. So he did research from various cities, put it together with our research, and came up with the ordinance that is before you this evening. I think it might be worthwhile to at least highlight some of the items from the PowerPoint that were included in your council packet. So I'm going to share my screen and see if I can walk you through some of the slides, not all of them. So is that visible to you?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the originator of this particular PowerPoint is a consultant with McBride, Dale, Clarion. Elizabeth Fields is the one who prepared it, and spoke to her and received permission to utilize it. And this was done quite a while ago, probably maybe a year and a half, year, year and a half ago, so it's not totally up to date. But she does give a nice job, does a nice job of trying to explain what small cell is and what this is all about. I think the distinction here is that this is not a cell tower like what we know at the North Site or what we know in French Park. This is a small cell, so it's a monopole, so it's one singular pole with some attachments on it. And so we'll talk a little bit more as we go into this. But you see from this particular PowerPoint presentation that you have the cell tower, which is the macro in this particular slide, and it relies on small cell to transmit data back and forth. This is what we know as cell towers. We should look very familiar to you. And this is what some small cell looks like. The bottom picture down here on the bottom, this is not the best-looking picture because it's pretty cluttered from my view. This one here, if you see where my cursor is, this is on a wood pole, it's on the top of a wood pole. The wood pole is not so attractive, but the top of it is not too obvious. But they do come in different shapes and styles. This is something that is local. These two black ones right here, the one on the right and the one second from the left, are currently in the city... are currently in the city of Mason. And so they're less obvious. So they're a black mat and actually match the mast poles for traffic lights and also match street lights in, in that particular community. The one here in the center that is lit up, I believe that might be in Loveland, but don't quote me on that. This is an extreme. Some communities have tried to disguise them in all shapes and forms. So you can see what, what you could possibly do. I would not recommend that at this time. But a small cell facility is, is really intended to take information and pass it back and forth. And we're talking about data here, not so much, we're not talking about cell calls. We're talking about data that's going back and forth. So instead of building more cell towers, telecommunication companies have moved towards the small cell facilities and then strategically locating them so that they transmit data back and forth. And we haven't, you don't typically hear complaints about not being able to transmit data. You hear more about dropped calls, but probably with, especially I would think with the COVID nineteen pandemic, more people are transmitting data now than what we probably had anticipated. So you're not seeing complaints about it. But five G is being marketed by telecommunication companies. And so residents are going to want the capability of five G. Well, there is some question about what is the health and safety of a five G or small cell? And that's not something that we can really weigh in on or regulate, that it's not in our purview. But in this particular presentation from Elizabeth, she has described it as the general exposure from, from small cell is the equivalent of, of a cellphone. So if you're standing nine feet from a small cell facility or a pole, it would be similar to the exposure to a cellphone. I know some folks believe that it's much greater than that or that there are greater health implications. But once again, that's not our bailiwick on this particular item. Their question was raised about putting small cell underground. It cannot go underground because it is, it generates heat. So that would be problematic if it was placed underground. So consequently, we're looking at it being up in the air. The range on these systems, it can range from a hundred fifty to five hundred feet, but a lot of it depends on what the, what the, what the contour is, the land, and what other obstacles are, are in place. So I mentioned that a couple of different bills went through. House Bill four seventy-eight is the one that made it through the process. And that's where identified that we could regulate location, spacing requirements, heights, setbacks, and design. And so that's what this ordinance before you this evening hones in on, is trying to identify specifically what we can do to regulate some of those aspects of it. So the, the, let me, let me go back to my screen here. So in regards to the, the ordinance itself, it tries to call out specifically those particular areas that, that were just highlighted. And I believe that to mimic and try to adapt it to Amberly Village as well. And I, before you have any deliberation or considering voting on this, I would recommend one change as a result of, after talking with the mayor today and also speaking with Law Director Kevin McDonough. And that would be in the area of the location requirements. So whether, if you recall that, there were two areas of location requirements. The second paragraph stipulated, well, what our intent was is we want it to be not closer to anyone's house than one hundred feet. But the language that is in your packet right now says one hundred feet from any property line of a residential use. And as Kevin and I discussed that, as well as what the mayor brought to our attention, that is overly restrictive and going beyond what the state legislature is allowing us to do. So we want it, we'd like to modify that language and put forth the language of, instead of one hundred feet from any property line of a residential use, that instead it would say one hundred feet of res, of a residential structure. So one hundred feet from a residential structure. That way it's very clear that we do not want it within a hundred feet of a, of a house. So that's the, that's the amendment that we would want you to consider before you deliberate or take any action on this particular ordinance. The planning commission, this was referred to the planning commission because this was staff generated. I went to the planning commission, they did not go to any council committees. The planning commission was supportive of it and referred it back to council in the form that it went to them. And so it is now ready for council's consideration. So a motion to approve and a second, and then some discussion, and then ultimately a vote would be appropriate. Thank you.
Got one question before we get on. Would, would we have to define residential structure?
I'm going to defer to Kevin on that because that is the language that he suggested putting into the bigger code.
Okay, I got a question. Is that located, that definition located anywhere else in our code? I did not look at that. Like, for example, in a general definition of like land use area or anything like that.
Let me see.
Okay, in the meantime, I think first, as Scott said, we'll need to have a motion to amend the ordinance as submitted. So if anyone would like to make the motion to amend based on what Scott said.
I'll move that we amend the language to designate that it be a hundred feet from a residential structure, a primary structure, whatever the proper terminology is.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the ordinance as submitted to council that would clarify that it's within a hundred feet of a residential structure as opposed to the residential property line. Are there any questions or comments on that? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we amend ordinance twenty twenty dash ten to clarify that it is within a hundred feet of a residential structure as opposed to a residential property line. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
Scott, go ahead.
Kevin, in our, it does not refer to as a residential structure. It has dwelling or it has one family dwelling. So the one family dwelling would be the appropriate reference section.
That's, yeah, I agree.
So the amendment that we just passed will, will use that term, one family dwelling. Okay, now, now that the amendment's been made, we need a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as amended.
Don't we need to waive three readings first? Or are we not doing that?
No, very good point.
I'll move that we waive three readings on ordinance twenty twenty dash ten.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance twenty twenty dash ten, adding chapter one sixty to the code for, for small cell facilities. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to ordinance twenty twenty dash ten. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Okay, now it would be appropriate to have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as amended.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as amended.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as amended. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it's been, what?
I have, I have a question. And I may be losing track of the order of the ordinances, but can, Scott, can you point out to me where the cellphone company or the person seeking the permit, where they are required to show that they have notified the property owner that, of, that they are going to do this? I see where it says property owner approval if applicable. And I mean, it is possible that the state will say the owner doesn't, doesn't get to approve or disapprove. But I think that the property owner should at least be given notice before a company comes and digs a hole in their front yard.
Okay, we are the property owner. It's, it's not the homeowner.
Well, if, yeah, okay. In some cases, I have read that a property owner can come home from vacation, as I discussed earlier, and the Verizon or whoever it is is already, you know, spray painted on the front lawn where they intend to install a tower. And the property owner has been divorced and was not given the benefit of even notice.
Well, what you're, what you're putting in place here are regulations on small cell. So it's going to put our property, which is going to be our right of way outside of the, outside of the street. So when the permitting process is what you're referring to, when they come to us, we are going to issue a permit. One of those conditions is that they notify adjacent property owners. But the reality of it is, it is our property that they'll be putting a pole on. But it's, so if they end up in somebody's yard, then that would have to be removed because it cannot be in somebody's yard.
Well, let's say they put it in the right of way of, we all have a right of way.
Correct.
And we don't have sidewalks, so there's really no delineation in most areas of the village. So if, if they want to come and put a small cell tower in the right of way of my front yard, essentially right in the center of my front, you know, right out my window right there, I would like to have advanced notice even though it is the village's property. And I can see where any other resident in the village would, would feel like this is, you know, if that's their property. And I, I think they, and a minimum, and a bare minimum, residents deserve notice that this is even, has been submitted and it's even under consideration.
Right.
There is a, an approval process. We have a hundred and twenty days to approve. Once they file the application. So we'll be fully aware that there's an application filed and those property owners will be notified. Unless they're gone for a hundred and twenty days, I mean, that could happen.
That could happen too.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. But there is a lengthy approval process.
It is our intent to make, put the burden on the telecommunications company to make sure that the property owner has been notified. Once this ordinance is adopted, then we will get that in better format so that make sure that if the telecommunications company has not done that, then the village follows up to make sure that the property owner is notified. But we have not worked out the application process yet for that. But that is a, a key component of it.
I don't have anything else to add.
Thanks.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as amended. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine. Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Oh, he's left the room.
Ray?
He's not there.
Yeah.
He walked out. I saw him.
Okay, go ahead, Tammy.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, and now would be appropriate, given the fact that we want, want to have this on the books as soon as possible to consider a motion for an emergency measure.
I move that we pass ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as an emergency so that it can go into effect right away in the event that there is an application for a small cell tower, that the village is prepared to deal with it with some regulations. So moved.
Second.
Okay, before we make the motion for to pass this as an emergency measure, question, since Councilman Warren has returned, can his vote on the ordinance be reflected or not?
Yes, I think it can.
With respect to ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as amended, your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and now it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as amended as an emergency measure, which would allow it to go into effect immediately. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as amended as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardak.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, Scott, I'll turn it back to you for the, for the remainder of your manager's report.
Thank you. We did review our residential recycling report. This would be for twenty nineteen. And Amberly Village diverted twelve hundred tons of waste material. So we had a diversion rate of sixty-one percent, which is the highest category that we can have in terms of that kind of return. That did net the village a little over fourteen thousand dollars. But more importantly, our residents are participating in recycling, and that's extremely important to us. The other component of that is that natural waste is counted in there. So the, the resources that the council commits to brush pickup and vacuuming, that now gets factored into the recycling numbers. So it's very impressive. So congratulations on the recycling numbers. And then my second item to, to talk about is, as, as communicated in our broadcastings to residents, technical adjustments are occurring this month. Our administrative staff are transitioning back to their offices on a staggered schedule. And we anticipate they will be back here in the municipal building on June the first in full, full form. The maintenance staff has transitioned back to their Monday through Friday schedule. And as a result of COVID nineteen pandemic, we are doing some things different. And that's what I wanted to mention tonight. Residents will still have their brush picked up weekly. But one change that we are making is that we are no longer specifying a particular chipping day by street. You may be aware that if, like, for example, if you live on Arborcrest, your brush is going to be picked up on a Monday. So you are considered the Monday route. But going forward, we really need to be more efficient and more effective. And we'll continue to pick up brush once a week, but we do not want to specify the day that it will be picked up. So that will enable us to have greater flexibility, allowing the maintenance department to schedule this as they schedule other work. And then this also means that our June council meeting is anticipated to be back in our council chambers. So our June eighth council meeting should occur in council chambers. Some modifications may need to be made to keep our physical separation. But I know we're all anxious to get back to having in-meeting persons, but we will do that in the manner prescribed by the, by the state and by, by Hamilton County for those meetings. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the manager?
One question, Scott, regarding future council meetings. So do you anticipate there'll be a physical barrier between each council position? Or will council members be between each council position, or will council members be situated and more spread out throughout the council chamber?
That's one of the plans. It's in the works. We're doing some measuring to identify what is the spacing between council members. We did have a committee meeting, a compensation benefits committee meeting in a in March. It was one of, it was the last public meeting that we held in person. And a separate, well, we had physical distancing there and council members sat every other seat. But we're going to take a look at that. It it'll it'll involve a different arrangement. I just don't know who is going to get pushed out. Likely staff will be sitting out in the audience. But we also have to think about how we're going to deal with the residents as well as they come in. So all those plans are part of the transition period that we're working, the transition plan that we're working on right now in order to be up and ready for opening the building on June the first.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the manager? If not, we'll move on to the chief's report. Lieutenant Bloom, do you have anything?
Just a few things is, as a police department, as we're moving through this COVID-19 pandemic, how we're operating. As I'm sure you're aware, especially on nice days, how busy the parks are. So we definitely have saturation type patrols going on from, you know, during our day shift, daylight hours, when the parks are really busy, as well as extensive patrol still through the synagogues, JCC, and all of our businesses, even though most of them are not occupied during those times. We're really focused on community oriented policing still in the neighborhoods. And surprisingly, things are going really, really well. Our crime rate's been pretty low. We still have only had one car that was broke into in any of the parks. And crime throughout the village has been really low. Auto accidents with reduced, like, I think we only had three auto accidents in April, which is probably a little bit lower than we would normally have, which, all that's good stuff. But that said, we're starting to probably try to ramp up our our traffic enforcement a little bit as traffic's getting a little heavier. You'll, we've seen, you know, speeds increase a little bit, people passing people over double yellow line. Those are the kind of traffic stops we're making right now, the more serious violations as we move forward. Still maintaining our personal protective equipment and stuff on some of our runs and trying to communicate with residents on some reports over the phone instead of having that face to face contact. So that's just how we're advancing right now and learning experience every week as we as we learn, as everybody else does, is what the best practice for operations are. But we're definitely moving forward in a safe manner and things are going well.
Okay, are there any questions for the lieutenant? If not, we'll move on to the mayor's report. And the first item have is Resolution 2020-17 before you. This is a resolution which would refer the Amberly Green zoning text to the planning commission. This is just another step in the process that we have been working on now for quite a few months. We've had two council work sessions. We've also had staff and Kevin work through the zoning text to come up with and and incorporate our comments that were developed in the in in the council work sessions. And I especially want to thank Brian Schneider from Hamilton County Planning Department for his excellent assistance during this, during these work sessions and his work between work sessions and incorporating our comments. The zoning text, as we've talked talked about, the actual property remains zoned the way it is right now, Residence A, but it creates a process which would allow the possibility, as we move forward and identify things that we might want to do on the property, to incorporate this new zoning. And it obviously is there are steps that you have to take throughout the process. And just as there's going to be numerous steps we have to take to even get the the zoning text approved, you know, if if council approves the resolution tonight, it will be referred to the planning commission. The planning commission will consider it, including a public hearing at the the planning commission. They may make some changes. They would refer it back to council. And council will again have another public hearing on that and consider the thing. So this, this, as I say, is another step in the process. But I have to say, we're probably maybe halfway through the process. And so there will be a lot of opportunities for both input from the public as well as input from council members as we consider the changes. What this zoning text creates is a list of things that we, that council has discussed as possibilities that we might want to do on the property. And I do stress the word possibility. It's it's not, this is not a list of the things that council says we are going to do on the property. This is just a list of things that we think might happen on the property over a period of time, and it is a long period of time. It is, it is a large property. And so there will be a number of things that that may occur on the property. But each each individual thing will get, you know, we, once the zoning text is approved, each individual thing will be subject to approval by council and review by council. So it really just is creating that process. So I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 2020-17 referring the changes to the zoning code regulations to the planning commission.
Second. Is that, I moved, you're moving?
I moved.
Second.
I already seconded.
Oh.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved Resolution 2020-17 referring the changes to the zoning code to the planning commission. Are there any questions or comments? Alita?
Thank you. Thank you so much. So I know that all of you know, I've I've not been particularly shy about some of my concerns about this this document and some of the things, and I I have shared that on the record at at our working group sessions. And while I continue to have reservations about some of the permissive uses, I think one of my biggest hangups here is that there really aren't any protections baked in here for how we keep the majority of the property or the portion of the property that we want to keep for community use. And Tom did a good job of even drafting it into, it's baked into the text of our desires in the document. But there's not really a good process there, but for us taking it up kind of as a parallel track, which we had talked about doing. So despite my concerns, I think, Tom, you outlined really nicely that this is a really robust community process, community engagement process. And I know it's, we've been, it's been going on for a long time, and it's time to get the community, you know, in front of us and and having these conversations. And I I do support that. And so my thoughts today are really not about the text itself. I have made those concerns clear, and I will continue to do so, and I'm on the record here doing it. But I I have, you know, I do think that in terms of timing, you know, I have two main concerns and two smaller concerns. I'll go very quickly here. First of all, I know that we were on sort of a quick track because we had two folks on the hook trying to get, you know, the both the masons and the JCC eager for us to move forward and in being good partners. I think everybody's in a little bit of a slow mo with the economic changes, including us, frankly. Our, as Councilman Hattenbach, you know, gave in the report, we don't know what our economic realities are. And to go to the public and start having a conversation, not really being able to articulate maybe what has really changed after we have some Q2 numbers or some 2019 tax collection information or whatever, we may, we may just be in one or two months here might make a really big difference in terms of what we know about ourselves. And that, I don't think, will impact our partners who are now moving slower than us. But really, it comes down to two things for me. One is, again, the way the text is structured, I'm just very concerned about how it doesn't bake in any way to set aside that community space, that green space, that public space that we've been, I think we all agree conceptually and all have been talking about. And in fact, I think we all discuss this as, let's look at the slope study and start there and, you know, run this parallel set aside. But we haven't done that yet. And so if if this process gets way out in front of us, the parade of horribles here is that the developers are going to read this as open season on Amberly Green, and they'll get way out in front of us and put us on the defense before we even had a single meeting about our slope study. And I I'm really worried about that. So a couple of months may allow us to make a plan for ourselves about how we can come back together to have at least a preliminary conversation about that piece. But really, actually, most importantly, even just listening to our conversations over the last two months, you know, last month, we voted to table a planning commission discussion or to whatever that that the zoning piece, the other zoning piece, a month so that we could try to do it back in person to give our, you know, community the opportunity to be back in front of us. And if I had assurances that our sending this to planning commission today wasn't going to be some quick send through in June, and we don't even know if people are going to be allowed in the building, I might feel more comfortable. But again, giving us one or two months to say, you know, we know exactly, we can plan for what a public engagement process is going to look like here, either the hearings in planning commission or the hearings, frankly, in our own council meetings, and have a little bit more space, just a month or two of space, to be able to really, this is a really important public hearing process. This is one people have really been like, you know, we got to get this one right, and people have been waiting for this one. I I just think, like, I appreciate all the hard work. I appreciate that everybody, the, I agree, all the list of all the people that the mayor just mentioned, Scott and Kevin and everybody. I know we've put a lot of work into this, and I'm eager to get this to the people. But I just think for a safe and thoughtful process here, if we could buy ourselves one month to or two months maybe to hold this referral so that we can have a have understand when we go to the public what it's going to look like when they come into the building to engage with us, either in planning commission or across. And to 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 try to, you know, basically ask Scott or us or whatever to try to have that plan for, you know, a time horizon on when we can start that slope study conversation. That's that's my that would be my, I mean, I, there's an open motion on the table, so I won't make another one right now. But that would be my recommendation is just to hold this a month.
Just, just, I just want to make a couple of comments. You you said that we were, you you led your conversation to talk about us fast tracking. We never talked, we were never fast tracking this thing. We wanted to ensure that this actually had the, you know, a robust process. We did not want to shortcut, you know, the when the JCC wanted to go faster, we explained that this was going to take time. And and, you know, I think they were disappointed it was going to take time, but we did not want to fast track this thing. It was too important to get this zoning text correct. So there was no thought on anyone's part that I'm aware of, including the village manager or anybody, that we were going to fast track. And the the other thing
Fair enough, fair enough. I I that's, yes, that's fine.
The other thing I, you know, with your comment that, you know, this zoning text, we're going to be inundated with developers, et cetera. I still come back to, we own the property. No developer is, you know, just because of zoning text gets approved, no developer is all of a sudden going to be saying, oh, I want to do this. Hey, we own it. They can only come in and do something if we say, you know, would you consider doing this and and this? So I just don't see, you know, I I think this has been a, you know, a process that we entered into. You know, we had these council work sessions, and I think it's time to to take the next step of getting public input. We were very keen to get public input all along. And so those are kind of my comments. And Peg, I think you want to say something?
I did. I just wanted to say that I, I mean, I do share Alita's concerns conceptually, and I have brought them up in meetings as well. Every time we discuss this, I ask Scott to reassure me that we are going to work with the slope study and all that. But I actually come to an opposite conclusion that I think as long as it has taken us to get to this point, I think we need to go ahead and take this step. And we can slow it down later if we end up feeling like we need to, you know, allow, expand the time for public comment or whatever. But get the planning commission's eyes on it. Every step we've taken has taken twice as long as we've expected. And so I don't think holding it up for a month or two at this juncture is the way to go. I am very concerned about the communication and the engagement, and I believe the staff is working on this. But I I agree, we want to be part of it as well, and I, that's that's all.
I I have something I would like to add.
Go ahead.
I feel very good about the work that we have done. We've spent a lot of time and not just in this work group, but leading up to it. This definitely was not a rush, and I think that Brian, his, I mean, I appreciate you acknowledging his assistance because he really did work and steer us in the right direction for accepted practices and accepted language. I don't think that we have done any, you know, we've taken all points of view into account. And just in keeping with the process, sending this to the planning commission is definitely, it's time. It's the right thing to do. They see, that's their job. They see these kind of things monthly. And they will bring a more fresh eyes in the community onto our work. And I'm ready to move forward in that in that respect.
I think that's all fair, and I just reiterate the concern that I hope the meeting isn't a planning commission meeting with, you know, like, when there's not able to put people in the building because we don't know what that's going to look like, and I'm sure it won't be. So I'm saying it on the record here. I would hope that the planning commission schedules a meeting when there's an opportunity to really publicize this to the public and that they're able to get into the building in that way. And again, I will say, I'm, I, I mean, I, I understand the point, Mayor. I I don't necessarily 100% agree in terms of what could happen with developers and and the position that it puts us in. But regardless, I think the slope study conversation is something we've talked about many, many times. And so I'm just putting it out there one more time that it would just, it would be great to spark that conversation in a reasonable timeline in the coming months.
Can we, can we urge the planning commission to hold their to hold their discussion of this? I mean, this is just relating to what Alita just shared. Can we urge the planning commission when they have an opportunity to hold their meeting that reviews this to ensure that that it is a full, it is a full, normal, public meeting? That is, it's not a Zoom meeting or anything like that?
Can I ask another question related to that? I have been under the impression that our engagement around this is not limited to public hearings. They are not one and the same, that the public hearings will be public hearings is engaged as possible, as open as possible, et cetera. But that our, the village's engagement around this, there's going to be more communication, written materials, whatever, and an education process for people beyond those two mandated forums. Is that correct, Scott?
That is the intent, so that we're not relying on the public hearing as our means of communicating what this proposed Amberly Green development zoning text means. So the intent is that there would be a document or documents that would show some history and show some context for this particular action that we are considering so that residents can view that and understand that piece of it before we get into the public hearing phase where we got bombarded with questions without the opportunity to have some background information from from where it came. So yes, that is the intent.
That's helpful. Thank you, Scott, for that answer, that and Peg for asking that. That's helpful.
And Scott, I think I'm correct, and probability is that the planning commission, the earliest they would hold their public hearing is July. Is that correct?
It could be at the June meeting, but it could also be at the July meeting. If it was at the June meeting, the turnaround would have to be quickly here in order to get information prepared and out. So just, I I didn't take any action until council took this action tonight. So if this is approved tonight, then the the next set of planning will will occur for for planning commission. So I don't want to commit the whether it would be June or July, but there's a good chance it could be the July meeting.
There's no rush.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Can I just ask one? On the slope study thing, are we planning to convene that as, is the, is the vision for that to come back as that council working group, do you think? Is that what that? Is that, would that be the forum for that? Is that?
There are two things there in regards to the, the slope study itself. The Public Buildings and Parks Committee is probably the one committee that would be most likely taking that matter up. When we talked about Amberly Green in general back in 2019, there was some suggestions from council members that all council members should be involved with the discussion on Amberly Green. I would just point out to you that it's great having all the council involved in the discussions on Amberly Green, but it certainly does not facilitate the flow of communication and moving a project along as effective as a commit, as a committee. So it would be my preference that we work through the Public Buildings and Parks Committee on this particular aspect of it. It will come to the council. Certainly, council will have its say-so on that, but I think it's more effective working in that committee level.
Any other questions?
One more. Is it possible to stream planning commission meetings? Have we upped our game on technology such that that would be possible or beneficial?
You mean if we're in live session and, and broadcasting it like we're doing on council?
Yeah. Or recording it for later on this big matter so that people can know what's being discussed and have, like, if they can't attend, they could at least watch it later? Just a thought.
We, we have not done that because typically our, our issues are more variance-related, so it only affects maybe a few property owners. So there really has not been that need, but this may be one that rises to that particular level of finding another way to communicate it out to the, to the residents. That could be part of our communication plan on this.
Any other questions? If not, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2020-17 referring the changes to the zoning code regulations to the planning commission. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock.
Yes.
Peg Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach.
Yes.
Alita Kamine.
No.
Tom Newthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolf.
Yep.
Related to the June 8th council meeting, I wanted to, again, just have for those that might be viewing this at some point, just to stress that we will be having a public hearing at the June 8th council meeting that will be in council chambers, at least that's planned today. That public hearing will be considering the changes to the village zoning code as well as it's, we, we intend to consider in that public hearing the changes to the property maintenance code. So I know that there's been a lot of residents that have had interest in some of those changes. And so for the residents that would like to have their comments, we will be having that public hearing at the June 8th council meeting. And then the only other thing I wanted to say is that Rabbi Sissi Koren passed away, and she was a very instrumental leader in our community. She had been the, served as the senior rabbi at Rockdale for more than 15 years and was the first female senior rabbi to serve a Cincinnati congregation. So it's a big loss to our community, and I just wanted to recognize that. And that concludes my mayor's report. Any questions?
Mayor, her husband is on our-
Human Rights Commission.
Human Rights Commission, yeah. Rabbi, so.
If you recall, Rabbi, Rabbi Koren came and spoke strongly in favor of the passage of a strong human rights ordinance for council. She was really, really-
Quite eloquent.
Very sad.
Is there any new business?
I have a question. This is to, I guess, to Scott. This has to do with the, the green, the green proposal sent from Shriners for the clubhouse, right? Did we ever have an opportunity to, to, to give, to give that property potential commercial development as opposed to a nonprofit?
You're, you're referring to the Scottish right of Masons for their-
Well, Mason, I'm sorry, Mason.
In regards to the former clubhouse.
Correct.
But they approached the village, so that the property has sat there for years, fallow and not doing anything, the building itself. And one of the conditions, if we were going to move forward with the JCC, was to consider requiring them to demolish the building.
Right.
The Mason right of, or, excuse me, the Scottish right of Masons approached us with their interest in it. That's how that occurred.
But, so, so the question, the question I have is, we had a, I don't know if this is a land development or a green, Amberly Green meeting of several months ago where we had asked if, if that property, if that part of the property, that the clubhouse property could be given for potential commercial, you know, given to, to a commercial realtor for potential marketing. And I'm just wondering if that's still a possibility, or is that now off the table? Or because of the-
We have to have zoning.
What's that?
We have to have zoning. We can't really market it without zoning. We're in the middle of it.
Okay.
And that's my opinion, sorry. I'm just extroverting.
That could be.
Any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.